ADA Transition Plan now. They are moving forward with the fiscal year eight projects, fiscal year 18, I'm sorry, projects. Fiscal year 19, we have 485,000 and 150,000 for 2020 and 2021. And again, the 150,000 per year going out all the years, there's 300,000 still unfunded. And again, as they work through the plan, they may find that 150,000 per year was maybe not the right number, maybe needs to be a little higher, but that's what they had originally put in for sales tax funding.
Go ahead, Gary.
I just would like to make the comment since there's been much discussion over the past months and years that we are a retirement community and many of us do have various challenges in living our everyday life, that if there's any way that we can accelerate any ADA improvements through the years, I think it's beneficial for our whole community. I just think this is an area that I feel the exact opposite I feel about other issues. This is something we should accelerate.
US 41 Bridge Approach Lighting at the Harbor Walk, 120,000 in fiscal year 19. Taylor Street Re-bricking was unfunded last year, but at a previous council meeting, they asked that we move forward with this project, so we did add it to the funding for fiscal year 19. Shreve Street Complete Street Improvements. Again, this is a project we are working with FDOT on. It is an unfunded project currently with them. We only have budgeted 225,000. Project's expected to be 350,000, so it still remained or remains unfunded. Shreve Street Trailhead. This project, again, as you remember, last year, they had applied for funding for this project. Urban Design, again, is going to apply again, so 200,000 remains budgeted for the 50% share of the city and 200,000 applied for grant. IT Infrastructure is 146,000. This is M2O, I think, right? Controllers, is how you say it. So it's an upgrade as well as replacements. Harbor Walk West Area 3 Design, so again, where the star is, that is where we're funding from the General Fund for Design, and 367 has been funded by the NPO for the construction. Police Fleet Replacements. The last two years, 19 and 2020, are the 100,000 set aside to help funding the police fleets. Capital Project Management, again, 90,000 per year. Again, the funding stops in 2021, so currently, that's all we have budgeted. Airport Road Complete Street Improvements and Cooper Street Complete Street Improvements. Again, these two projects have been submitted to the NPO. They are on the unfunded list. So we do have some money set aside for these projects out of 1% sales tax if they do not get funded, but on the Cooper Street project, we still are short 500,000. Virginia Avenue Complete Street Improvement, 950,000 is in the 1% sales tax plan for 2020 and 2021. Harbor Walk, Lashley Park Marriage Point, 500,000. Again, those are in the out-years, 2020 and 2021. And the last project, Baynard-Vasco Sidewalk Improvements. This project has come back. It had been moved, we were trying to do it on 41, is now back on Baynard-Vasco. Any questions on the 1%?
Go ahead.
Yes.
Can this list be prioritized for us?
Um, yes. Who would be setting the priorities?
Well, I guess that's my question. How do we go about prioritizing what has to be done versus what we want to have done?
We could prioritize with what's currently already in design and construction and the ones that are not in design and construction.
Yeah, I'd like to see something that shows us the priority list in terms of what's most important and what, maybe even rate it on a scale of one to five of what the importance of that project is versus what we really, what we'd like to have done because it's a wish list, you know what I'm saying? I just, I just kind of think that this is a really open-ended list of, I mean, I know we have to do a lot of these things, but what's really the most important for us to absolutely get it on the to-do list versus?
Well, these are the projects that went through the committee for the referendum that was voted on.
Right, I understand that.
So really, we're pretty much committed to most of them, but like Ponce Park, for example, we're not, we're learning that we're probably not going to be there in any construction phase in this cycle.
Right.
So in my mind, that one would be one that would hopefully carry over if it was renewed. So you can speak to.
Yeah, when the people in the county voted, we had a list of projects. And with the exception of the Taylor Street Re-bricking specifically, which we tied into the downtown improvements, the people saw this list and they voted for it. And since then, some of the estimates have changed. Yes, they have changed. And fortunately, if you look at the revenue projection, when we started this program in 2014, that revenue projection was 2 million a year. It's now 2.8. Now, that could change. Maybe the sales tax market may not be as high next year or the year after, but that's what we're taking in. So we've been able to fund some of these other projects with the extra revenues. So the next chart that our interim finance manager is going to show is, was not voted on.
Was not included in the list.
Not included in the list.
Right. But most of these, except for that one that you, but downtown lighting and other aspects of downtown were included. So yeah, that's how the Taylor Street re-brick got included in that. But like the ADA improvements, all of those were taken, all of the projects actually were taken one by one, were presented by staff and were, you know, vetted through the committee. So, so let's move on to the unfunded, which is another big list.
But I, I think just to kind of support the notion, even though we, they were voted on, they were voted on based on an anticipated cash flow and we thought a projection. And if we, even though we are receiving more in intake of the sales tax funds, it still may not meet the project requirements, so there may need to be some prioritization if there are not sufficient funds.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks.
So do you want us to bring that back to you?
Yeah, I think what Kristen said, the ones that are in design, like are further along than the ones that haven't been started at all, that would be helpful to know because Ponce, I mean, we're, that's another, a good example is that, you know, it's, it's in design, we're not currently spending any funds for that design, but, you know, the construction is way out in time. So I think if you could prioritize it that way, that would be super helpful.
And again, the Ponce one, you might see as still a higher prioritization than, say, Lashley Park Marriage Point, so, but we could bring you the list and then council can prioritize what they feel are the higher priority projects out of the remaining list.
Right, because what, and what we're finding is every bid that we've pretty much let out there, except for the drainage that we've heard today, is coming in over what it was estimated by the engineers, so.
Okay, we'll bring it back.
Okay, so some of the unfunded projects are still in play are the City Hall renovations, Phase Two. We're working on Phase One right now and those were funded, but Phase Two and Phase Three have not been funded. Security Measures, we have just gone to bid and I think we received the bids back and are reviewing them. That project still has not been funded because we were waiting to see what the costs were going to be. We have an estimate in there, but we will be coming back to appropriate those funds if they're within. Harbor Walk West at Gilcrest Park, the Living Shoreline Project, 20,000. Urban Design is hoping to work with a partner with a contribution for that project. Veterans Park Phase Two Design and Construction, 450,000.
Is that just our, our side of it or are we expecting contributions on that as well? Or is that what the city's planning to put in?
That is the estimate that, based on our conceptual, the folks at the Veterans Park are going to try and raise the money. We just have it there as a placeholder.
Okay.
If we as a, for instance, if, if we as a city want to take this project on if they can't raise the money in the next sales tax program, that might show up on a list. To be determined. To be determined.
Harbor Walk US 41 North Brown Bridge Underpass Improvements. Again, this is on the NPO list as unfunded as well, but it's on our unfunded list as well. Historic District Streetlights, 330,000 unfunded. The Park Wooden Pathways and Pier Piling's Replacements. This is a new one this year and it's related to some recent happenings with our peers and our pilings. And Public Works thought we should start putting some money aside to start taking care of some of that infrastructure, so they were requesting 125,000 per year. Bethel St. Mark Infrastructure. We're putting some placeholder money in there for 550,000 per year. We would implement it in phases. This is what we're expecting might come out of the study that's currently underway for the infrastructure needed in that area. Harbor Walk East Phase Two, 825,000. The Mert Multi-Use Recreational Trail at West Henry Street Connection, again, unfunded 1.1 million. Historic District Markers, 300,000. US 17, which is Marion and Olympia Complete Street, US 41 to Cooper, 3 million. And this is on the NPO unfunded list as well. Royal Ponciana Improvements Complete Street, 2.5 million, currently unfunded. Alligator Creek, US 41 North Brown Pedestrian Bridge Number Two, 1. almost 9 million there. And again, NPO has that as an unfunded project. Alligator Creek, I'm sorry, South Pontagorda Park at Fire Station Two, 800,000. Traboo Park Improvements, 760,000. And US 41 at Cramer lead to Street Extension. So this one, again, is currently grant funded for the pre-designed design, but the construction, we do not know the amount yet or if it'll be funded.
Again, this list, as you could see, are staff's input into a thinking process that will get started on the next round of possible sales tax projects, once we get our group together to help decide what we want, because the people will be voting on that. I think it's either August or November of 2020.
2020.
2020.
It was 2014.
So these are just to start the process of thinking about what future projects might be. Obviously, there are more out there. This is just our initial, our initial input.
As far as the complete street projects, could those, could impact fees fund any of those type of projects since it's?
I'd have to look to Urban Design for that question. Yes, they're indicating yes.
So how soon is our impact fee study coming back? Do we have timing on that?
They just contacted me yesterday. We'll be setting up an initial meeting for next week and we can include these projects. And they'll be meeting with each division or department to go over the needs within the city.
All right. That's a good first step.
Okay.
Any other questions about the unfunded list?
You'll be hearing more on that.
Big numbers in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's a first, if it's our first attempt.
Okay, next we have the fiscal year 2019 General Fund Budget Status Update.
Okay, so Kristen Simeone, again, Interim Finance Director for Finance. We're just going to be discussing general fund in this particular status update. We did want to point out, again, administrative restructuring that has happened over the years. So we've had a reduction in the workforce since 2007, even through till to today, of 10.9%. In 2007, we had 313 employees. At our lowest point, we were at 263 employees. Currently, in fiscal year 2018, our count is 279. And that 279 does include Schnepp, which was added in 2015. There was four employees in that count for them. It's just a little history from fiscal year eight to fiscal year 18. And as you can see, in that 10-year period, personnel has only increased 11.3% and operations have decreased 11.2%. So total operations overall in that period has only increased 5%. Again, this is a little more on the history trend. Personnel costs increased 11.3% despite increases in health insurance, pension benefits and, I should say, expense. And during that time, we mitigated a lot of those things through limited or no pay increases, position eliminations, shift of some of the benefit expense over to the employees, and changes to the pension plans. Operating costs have reduced 11.2% in that same time period in spite of fuel increases, electricity, and oil-based products. Again, we're, through operational efficiencies and contract changes and negotiations, we've kept a lot of the costs down. Our current assumptions are 6% increase in ad valorem, which would include the new construction. Millage rate remaining at the 3.1969, still includes the transfers of 459,000 for the road resurfacing and 500,000 for the drainage. All our other revenues are estimated at a 1% increase overall. On the expense side, 3% salary or merit increase, 6% increase in health insurance, 10% increase in workers' comp. We've held the general pension costs flat and for the fire pension costs increased 10% and police pension costs decreased 10%. And then the other operating expenditures, there's a 6% net increase related to increases in computer overhead, insurances, and specific needs.
When's the last time we went out for bid on the workman's comp and the other insurances? Workman's comp in particular.
We, we just did a rebid, yeah.
Marion Pay's Procurement Manager, I believe we, 2015 fiscal year 2016, actually, is when we established a new contract.
Current financial policies, we just want to remind everyone that we do try to have a balanced budget with current revenues, including financing or unrestricted fund balance that exceeds or equals our current year appropriations. The use of one-time revenues to fund ongoing expenditures is discouraged. We try to only fund one-time projects with that. We continue to progress towards achieving the balanced budget without relying on reserves. We want to just bring you our five-year capital outlay plan. And so there's a list of all the equipment that the departments have requested and in what years. The dump truck from right of way was moved out one year to 2023 to help smooth the funding over the five-year period. All the others have pretty much stayed the same. You'll notice under Police Fleet that in 2021, you see the full amount of the funding. Previously, 1% sales tax was funding $100,000 and General Fund was funding the rest. So that will all go to General Fund, starting in 2021. And then there's the fire apparatus for the 800,000 that would be transferred to the other fund to cover that. In there is the new vehicle for an EMS training position. That is tentative. That discussion will be coming up in a little bit. So based on all that, with smoothing the funding, we were able to reduce the annual funding of the plan from 756,000 to 740,000 per year. Any questions? Then we just want to give you a look of where we were at when we came to you with the long-range plan and where we're at now. So based on the changes we've made, increasing revenues a little bit, and then the use in working on the expenditures, the use of operating reserves, we were able to lower to 628,750.
Howard Scott.
Yes.
What's that?
Okay.
When you go to the.
Go back.
Page.
But.
When you see use of reserves, that's budgeted use of reserves. It doesn't mean that we use that amount. Hopefully, we can get by using much of it, but you never know. It's budgeted use of reserves. That's what we're trying to wean ourselves away from. We haven't done it yet. But, but if revenues come in a little more, expenses come in a little less, that's the less need for the use of those budgeted reserves.
Just wanted to show you how we kind of came up with where we were at. So where we increased revenue, there was a little bit of decrease in the pay plan due to turnover changes, a decrease in the CRA transfer, increases in operating expense, and then a little bit of increase in the outlay plan, and that's a net number. So in regards to the operating expense, the things that were funding or causing the increase was IT operations and capital needs, the general fund share, 143,000. And a lot of that just had to do with renewal of contracts, that we had purchased three-year contracts on equipment and things like that, and now those renewal periods are coming up and due. Police Department Needs, again, they're all listed there. And then the Fire Department, Medical Supplies, Training and Volunteer Program. Other changes, and here are some that are to the good, reducing a little bit of the legal expense. Aqua was able to reduce a little bit of the city expenditures by 20,000. Parks and Grounds reduced some various expenditures. Facilities has an increase of 40,000 for some armament of the buildings. And then Urban Design was able to reduce the comp planning for the, the one year, fiscal year 19, by 25,000. Increased insurance for public safety, we're expecting a little bit of increase there. And then Human Resources, we didn't have to do the study again this year, so that reduced So comparing 18 to 19, there is still a little bit of an increase, but total operations Any questions on that? Okay. So before we go into staffing needs, we wanted to show you where we were at with the operating reserve. So the fiscal year 18 estimated ending reserves was about 3.6 million. We have a budgeted capital outlay reserve that we expect to have at the end of the year of 104,000. And then putting in the 8%, which is increasing the 0.5% as we talked about at the long-range plan meeting, that minimum would be 1.688, leaving us approximately 1.8 million available reserves for allocation. For staffing needs, we have.
Could we go back one slide?
Yes.
Sorry. When was the last time that we had a millage rate increase?
It has been a while, but I could look that up for you.
2014, is it? Is that, comes off the top of my head.
That's about right.
Four or five, yeah.
Yeah, that's about right.
Before that, because I think there was an increase and then there was a decrease.
That was going to be my next question. Was the millage rate increased or decreased from the previous year?
The, the last one was an increase, but there had been some decreases before that, I believe. So I could look up, we have a chart with that.
Where I'm, where I'm coming from this is, is this is an area that I have concern in is we have what's considered a substandard reserve. And yet, we've not had an increase in millage rate for a long time, and we're still making other expenditures to assist people taking care of their lots, et cetera. It's $500,000 a year. It's $500,000 a year, yet we're running a substandard reserve. I think that we should be more, first of all, I want to commend staff, over the years, of doing so much more with so much less. I want, I can't emphasize that enough. But it seems to me that we, as a community of, in a city in Pontagorda, have an obligation to assist our staff to, rather than putting the gun to them head and not increase in our taxes, we have a responsibility to put our reserve to a minimum of a standard reserve. I would prefer to see it even above that as other communities because things go up and things go down. And when times get hard, we've already asked our staff to cut all the meat out. That is so obvious from the slides and presentations we've seen, that we need to figure out some way, I feel, to put some more meat in so that we have something for a rainy day. And that's the, that's the biggest problem I have with your budget. You have complied with what our requests are. I think our requests have not been realistic. That's all.
Okay.
Safe for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you can go back to the slide.
Yep, sure.
It's confusing to residents. I've had a number of people ask me about this. When we get to this point and we start this conversation.
Yes.
Then people say, well, where does this money come from? Where does this, this 20 estimated ending reserves, where did that 3 million come from? Because it's like, we have this discussion and we talk about these reserves in one sense, and then all of a sudden, we switch to this conversation. And residents get confused. So would you explain?
Yes.
Where this money comes from?
So as all the revenues are collected and all the expenditures go out, we've always had a policy of having some minimum reserves. And what they've been over the years have changed. The government standard is 16.7%. However, when we were in the economic downturn and working on reducing a lot of things, we had gone to a 5% minimum operating reserve. Over the years, it's building back up, but again, we still are not where we're at, total revenues equal our total expenditures. So sometimes we do have planned use of reserves. And how it's been increasing is basically if the revenues come in better, as Howard mentioned, or the expenditures come in less, at the end of each year, we can see that and we add it back to the, the reserves.
Where's the 3.6 come from? Where did you get that number?
So at the end of fiscal year 17, that's from our audited, well, the 17, 9/30/17, we had a, a final balance. We plug it into our current budget and based on what our current revenues projections are and our current expenditures, that's what we expect to have at the end of the year.
Okay.
And again, it could, it could fluctuate because again, we're not through the end of the year yet, so it's just an estimate.
So what we're actually saying is that even though we started out FY 2018 showing that we were using reserves to balance the budget, we really could end up with 3.6 million left over.
Yes, but some of that is not spendable.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. But I just wanted to help people understand where this number comes from and, because it's like, all of a sudden, we make this shift in conversation and it's, it can be confusing.
Yes.
So thank you.
If we were to have 16.7%, if we were to have a standard reserve, what would that number be?
Hold on one minute.
Probably close to 3.6.
Yeah, maybe about.
A little more than double.
3.6. But we're, is it going to be 3.6 or is it going to be 7.2?
It'd be a little bit higher because 16.7 and that's an 8%.
And then we use a certain portion of those reserves every year.
It would be close to what you see there, 3.6.
Right. So my, my point is, is in 10 years, we haven't been able to really get to an ending of the year because we're always budgeting, using some of our reserves.
Yes.
From the downtime. And that's the point I'm making. We've asked you to do a lot more with, with less.
Yes.
And you've done a great job, but we still haven't been able to recover to where we were 10 years ago.
Right. And a lot of times, like Howard mentioned also, with the budgeted use of reserves, when the revenues come in better or expenditures come in a little less, that amount actually used could be lower than what we budgeted.
So back to what I'm saying, is I've. So back to what I'm saying, is I'd like to see us get to where we were 10 years ago, so that we're poised to head into the next downturn whenever it happens.
Go ahead.
Fortunately, our approach has been, and we're like many other communities, we're not different. We do what's called a conservative budgeting approach. And that is, we hope, and we've been fortunate, that revenues have come in a little more than what we budgeted. And we're not different than many other communities who take that approach. And we hope, and we've been fortunate, that expenses have come in a little less than what we've projected. And that's how we're able to handle this over the years. That's just how we handle it. That's our philosophy.
I think, too, we've been in a bubble as far as what we're going to talk about in this next upcoming slides with the staffing. And this pay study classification, I mean, it's been a long time since we've corrected any of that. We've just held everything down as far as we possibly can. And that's what Gary's speaking to, is that we've asked them to do that every single year, and eventually, it's going to come a time where we're going to have a lot of turnover, and we're going to have to make the jobs a little bit more attractive to get the kind of candidates that we require here. So we've been in a bubble in that sense, I think. But we have been doing better with bringing in the expenses, the revenues to meet the expenses. We have been working toward that. So hopefully, this year, we can continue on that path with the assumptions that we have. I think that's the goal. So now, we're going to talk about using...
Some of that.
Available reserves.
And all the departments that are requesting staffing are here to answer any questions. I'll go through briefly what they are, and then you can ask any questions you have on them. So PD is asking for one full-time dispatcher in the communications division. The estimate cost is 50,000. That's a net cost, because they think they could reduce a little bit of overtime by adding an additional staff. And this is the phase two. So originally, last year, when they had come to you and increased one dispatcher, they were really requesting two, and we'd put off one. So this is the phase two of that.
When we show you numbers, and when the public sees these numbers, that's a fully-loaded number, meaning it's not, it's not a salary. It's salary and benefits and to equip the person. So it's fully-loaded.
PD is also asking for community engagement officers, two. Again, we've put that in here tentatively, effective July 1. So the number we're showing you at the top, the 45,000, that's basically a quarter year of financing of that, those two positions. The annual cost would be approximately 180,000. And again, this will be dependent upon full staffing. And they're requesting this for being more proactive, additional, helping out in the hotspots of the area, and more community and special enforcement activities to be more proactive.
Our police chief is here, and if you would just come up, this is a new initiative that is being introduced, and so you may want to have some, hear more about it.
Good morning, Chief Davis, Police Department. Do you have any questions about it? Or do you want me to...
Explain it.
Okay. So what I'm looking to do is, since I've been here, and part of my assessment of the agency, I've noticed we're very reactive. We have a patrol section, we have our criminal investigation section, and our SROs who are in the schools. So when, the different complaints that I've gotten with the traffic enforcement issues, some areas where there's illegal narcotics activity, as well as some other illegal activity in different areas, and the, like the bicycle issues and the pedestrian issues, we can go out and patrol can hit those areas periodically, but it's sort of like a Band-Aid. Nothing's solution-oriented, and where we're really focused, and we're doing follow-up, we're doing actual investigations. Again, it's kind of a reactive type thing. So I'm looking to add a unit under the community services, which is one lieutenant, and he's in charge of the SROs and PIO and everything else. So he's, he, it's just a lot of time to take the, to actually come up with solutions for these things. So I want to put them under that lieutenant, and when I get the call for, in particular right now, one of the big issues is the service trucks that are parking on some of the roadways, and they're blocking the road, and our citizens are having to go around them on a WL line. So our officers will respond out there, but there's nobody to really kind of follow up and call the businesses and say, hey, this is what you have to do, or come up with a good solution. So that's what, it'll be something where I can put these officers, now your focus this week is on that, and make it fix this solution, or fix this problem for us. So, any question?
Now, you'll see that it's budgeted for July 1 of 2019. The reason is, we want to evaluate how we're doing when the police department gets fully staffed. We think it's going to be a while until they get fully staffed and up and running with full staffing, all trained out on the road. So we want to have plenty of time to evaluate as a department, how we're doing once, once we're out there, all positions are filled, and then that's why it's put off.
So would these two positions more than likely be filled by somebody already on the...
Yes, you want an experienced officer there.
Right, so you would elevate somebody that's already in your staff.
Correct.
And then that would make room for two new, just patrol officers.
Correct.
And if the, I know we got some comments back on email, there are memos that detail all of this out in the backup of the agenda, if you didn't read that. You should definitely read, especially with the dispatcher reading how many hours the supervisor sent actually...
And she's not supervising.
Answering the calls. And we all know, we hear these, you know, there's still stories out there, the boy that was in the minivan, you know, on the 911 call. We really need people, you know, the supervisory and the training. We have to always continue on that path, or, you know, things happen and it's tragic. So, I mean, we've had them in our community, and we have to be aware that we have to really stay on top of that, because our community expects it. They expect the service, too. So if you're still wondering about the details, there's complete memos on all of these positions in the backup material in the agenda.
Yeah, the dispatcher, that whole communications area is very stressful.
Yes.
And, and I agree, it requires people who have a high degree of training to be able to handle those situations that are instant, and so they have to respond. Are you, what, the question, I guess, about the community engagement officer, is this something that you're saying, Howard, that it's in here, but we want to continually evaluate it? So you're not really looking for us to approve it at this time? You're just looking, you want to bring it to our attention, and we're going to continue to discuss it?
Well, actually, it's up there to include in the budget proposal, but we'll be evaluating it once we become fully staffed, and once the chief and myself have a chance to sit down and say, okay, we're fully staffed, here's how our department is running, we still need this function, because we still have these hotspots out there and these various issues. But we're asking that it be placed in, and I say tentative, it's going to be in the budget, but it's not starting, or will be contemplated to be started until July 1, and we'll come back to you if we want to get this thing started. Rather than adding it at some other late date, we wanted to bring it to you now to tell you what we're thinking.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
I think it's needed. I mean, we all get to read the watch command report, so you get to see the calls that come in for the, these types of issues. And we do do Band-Aid approaches, like we'll put that speed trailer.
Exactly.
But, you know, how effective is that? I mean...
Yeah, it's, unfortunately, it's not evident to the residents. The questions that I've received are, what hotspots? This is Punta Gorda, you know?
Right.
And so the residents look at this, and they go, you know, what are we thinking? And so it's not, it's not completely apparent, you know?
Yes, and there is illegal narcotics activity, we know about that. It's just, and we just don't have the officers to go out there and do the necessary investigation to just get rid of it all together. So we do operations here and there, and we do our traffic enforcement and try to address it, the Band-Aid approach.
Yeah, this is where I feel that you, as a new person coming in, and sharing your expertise and experience, especially when it comes to training and knowing how to handle some of these situations from your background, is really helping guide us in a, in a new way. So I think those are the kind of things where we need to articulate that, so that we can continue to be proactive in what we do, and continue to keep the low levels of crime that we've been, become used to.
Yes, I want to be number one, so I want to be the safest.
There you go.
That's my goal.
So that's, I think, is important.
We need a toll. We need a toll booth.
And a moat.
Gary.
I think this position enables our very fine police department to subtly and quietly work even further close to us, being as innocent as we'd like to perceive ourselves to be.
Yes, sir.
And do it quietly, without making a big hoopla about it. So I think this is a fantastic idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I would just echo those comments. I think this, taking a proactive rather than a reactive approach is, is a very good idea, and the safety of the citizens here is absolutely paramount. So I commend you on your proactive measures.
Thank you.
This is a big deal. And the radar trailer, by the way, or the speed trailer, does work.
It does work.
I can't tell you how many times I've driven down Akiasta over the past two months, where people in front of me slam on their brakes when they look at that sign.
Good.
Like, you know, you're just driving along, fat and happy, and, and all of a sudden, you look up and, and you see people slam on their brakes. And the car, I mean, literally, I saw a car almost come to a screeching halt the other day, which I thought was humorous, but if you don't speed, you don't have the problem in the first place.
I'd like to also commend the police department for not showing deference to council members when they've been exceeded the speed limit. I confess.
Oh, true confession. Thank you.
I paid them well to do them.
Do you want to do the school resource officer slide while you're up?
So we're going to bring up the school resource officer program. They're requesting three additional school resource officers through the school board for Charlotte High, Baker, and Punta Gorda Middle. And currently, the positions would be fully funded through the school board, through state funds. The current price there, the 328,700 for a full year, it includes salaries and benefits, the operating costs. The current way we do school resource officers is we do, we take the vehicle and amortize it over eight years, so the depreciation cost is in there to help build up the cost for next vehicle, and startup costs for equipment and uniforms. So currently, the chief has said they could maybe use some vehicles that have not gone to auction yet, which is a short-term solution. So PD is going to be meeting with them later in the month to talk to them and maybe try and fund those vehicles upfront.
Yes, I have a meeting with superintendent and the sheriff next on the 24th. So we're going to be discussing how all this program's going to work, and the funding, and we're going to go over what the actual cost's going to be, because we're going to have three, we're definitely getting three, being required to put three here in Punta Gorda.
And one thing to remember, too, is when they're not in school, so all of these are regular calendar, they're...
So they're being funded by the school, but there are officers that we can, and we can use them to fill in people that are taking vacation and any kind of, to hopefully reduce costs of overtime during those summer months, so.
Lynn?
On the news the other night, they were talking about Cape Coral having to add, I believe, 22 new school resource officers, but they're saying that they have to pay for it out of taxpayer funds. Why are we saying that we think we're going to have it paid by the state? I understood the state was supposed to be funding them all, but I was confused by that message on the news.
Yes, I don't, the state has given so much money to Charlotte County School Board, and the superintendent is divvying that out between us and the sheriff's office, and so he's, he's agreed to fully fund ours, so thankfully...
It's great if they do. I just, you know, it's just, it's a big difference.
I know, I said, I hope that stays every year, you know, so.
Okay.
Just a comment, though, there are communities here that don't have school resource officers.
Yeah, they don't have any, yeah.
Yeah, that they have none, and so they've got to dip, we've been used to paying for that. That was a decision that our council, previous councils made years ago.
Yeah.
So.
For fire, they are requesting an EMS training chief. Again, it's to coordinate the fire and EMS training with a focus on the high-risk job functions such as ALS, medication administrations, technical rescue skills, and assuring compliance. And Ray is here, so. Bring him up.
All right. Good morning, Ray Briggs, Fire Chief. So a little history on the, on this position. We had the position, it was eliminated in 2008 during the economic downturn. The workload was distributed to several positions within the organization, including rotating throughout the shifts. Again, it's about training, a little, just some numbers here. Call volume in 2008, we ran about 2,800 calls a year. In 2017, we were over 4,000, so it's about a 50% increase in call volume. And of those 4,000 calls, 75% are EMS or medical in nature. So kind of building the picture there about the ALS movement. 2012, we started our ALS, our advanced life support level of service, and I'm just going to cut to the chase that when, some of the job functions that occur since that, since we started the ALS movement, they're what we consider to be high-risk, low-frequency type calls, meaning that they're a, you don't do them often, but when you do them, there's a very significant consequence if it doesn't turn out right. And so that's the emphasis of this training. Just collectively, each firefighter, EMT, or paramedic has required about 300 hours of training per year. If you talk about our ISO classification, the training that's required for that, their advanced life support, the, everything from EVAC, which is Emergency Vehicle Operator, which is 16 hours, and we can just, I can keep going, I could talk to you for hours about this, but, anyway, in the interest of time. So our personnel today, particularly the paramedics, they carry 23 separate medications on every call, which they have to have a very intimate knowledge of indications, contraindications, and all of that. So again, high-risk, low-frequency type events, dive calls, they, so this person would oversee that. Again, back in the, in the day, collectively, like I said, right now, we have some FTOs, Field Training Officers, which is a title assigned to a person that's on shift, who helps coordinate training on their shift. But essentially, what you end up with is, we have three shifts, three separate fire departments, right? And so we need somebody that can give that direct oversight when we're dealing with things like medications and interventions. I'll give you an example. In two weeks, we're doing an in-house training on surgical, surgical cracothomy, where you, you know, using pig tracheas, where they're doing, inserting criques into a pig trachea. That's, that's one of those events. If you need to do one of those in the field, it has to be done right, and that's where training falls in. So that's what we're asking for, is to fund that position.
And I would assume this would be a management position.
Absolutely. Yeah, they'll work day, you know, day shift, so it'll be a staff position. They'll be credentialed and sworn, so they'll also be available for our, again, I always mention ISO, it's relevant, we're approaching our assessment now, so they'll be counted in that, that as well. So we'll get points from our ISO classification as well.
Do you want to explain that, and the benefit to the citizens on the insurance service rating?
Sure. So ISO is a, essentially, it's a report card that's given to every municipality, every community in the country, on your, on your fire service, is what it is. And so they, they evaluate, and I could go into great detail, they evaluate both your suppression or our job, how well we can do our job, but training hours are part of that. It also evaluates our dispatch section. They realize that you can have great firemen, but if your dispatch isn't on the ball, then you're really not, not very effective. The third element is our utilities department, where they evaluate our water system. So they come in and they, they spend the better part of a week in our community. It takes years off of my life every time they do it. And we get a report card. So you, you get a classification, one is the absolute very best, and 10 is pretty much a non-existent department. We are currently at a 3. We have a 3, ISO classification of 3. The county is at a 4. Cape Coral, I'm not sure, Northport 2, so we're all in there. But the, where the rubber hits the road to the community, when you go to renew your insurance premiums, whether it be a commercial, and I understand the commercial side saves, there's a significant savings, but even on the residential level, when we renew our premiums, one of the first questions they ask is, what is the ISO classification for the city of Punta Gorda? So we're a 3. If you lived elsewhere and you were at a 4, you would pay more in insurance premiums than you would here. Does that make some sense? So it's a real big deal to us, and it should be a big deal to our, our residents as well. So we're due. I got the letter recently that we're up for an assessment, happens every three to five years. And so they count everything from, again, training hours to equipment, to all of that, staffing. Staffing's a huge piece of it, so.
And I think we've made such an... And I think we've made such an investment into this ALS that if, if this is the way that you see it needs to be overseen, then, then we need to move in that direction.
Absolutely. Again, I've been here 28 years and what I can say is the ALS movement since 2012, that initiative has absolutely done more for our community than anything that I've seen from a, from a fire and EMS perspective for sure. Truly changes lives daily.
Nancy?
Yeah, I was going to say, our community's become dependent on this level, high level of expertise.
Yeah.
And it's much increased over the years since, when you said 2007 or something that was, when it was done away, this position was done away.
Yeah, eight.
We were not as technical then.
Agreed.
So I think that, you know, there's much more of a need to make sure that the department is as knowledgeable as possible. Because I certainly want them to be able to handle any situation.
Sure.
For me or anyone in our community, so.
Well, and kind of on that, just, if you, if you think about hospitals and medicine, you know, medicine has changed tremendously over the past, you know, it changes annually, right? Weekly. And so the patients, I mean, hospitals are almost doing drive-through procedures. So patients come home to recover at home, which the level of acuity from the call that we, that we run is significantly different than it was two, three, five, 10 years ago. I mean, patients are coming home today, you know, where they would have been in the hospital for a week and then ultimately call 911 and, and here we are, so. And that goes right across the, you know, on the fire side of the house. You know, things are complicated today. Hybrid cars for vehicle extracan, there's a lot of training that's necessary. We need our folks to be able to depend upon that training when they, you know, middle of the night or whenever that call is. Yes, sir.
So I guess I feel the same way about you guys as I feel about the police department. And you know that that's very good. So what I would ask of you is, and I realize the size of our community also lends a little bit of difficulty to it because we're small, but what can we do up here to, to help you get us to a number two?
Thank you for asking. And, well, we're working on it right now. Unfortunately, it's, it's grading our past three years, but as we move forward, it's going to be staffing. I'm just going to say it. I feel like I'm going to be able to get us there with training. Our utilities department has left very, very few points on the table. They've done amazing work. Our, our dispatch communications left very few points on the table. They've done well. The points that were on the table were ours. And so we've made some significant improvements in, in training and pre-fire plans and all of those. Staffing will be the, the number one issue. And so we'll see where, where we get. My, my goal is a two? Well, my goal is to maintain a three, all right? Number one. And, and we skated into a three at our last evaluation. Just, we barely made it. I think we've made enough improvements that we'll maintain a three. But my eyes are on a two and it will take some staffing to get there eventually.
And that's my point. I, I just want to say that I have two individual friends recently that have had to call 911 for a medical emergency. In both cases, you guys beat the ambulance.
For sure.
And gave very important initial treatment until the ambulance was, because the ambulance can be caught somewhere else too. You know, and that's, that's the county and, and that gets, and you guys are just there very quickly in your four-minute or less.
Yep.
And I just want to commend you all for that.
Well, thank you.
I think we should, it does behoove us to do everything we can so in the future, you can get to the number two.
Thank you.
And through Ray's work, we do have another ambulance. We have two ambulances parked in the city, whereas we were, had one for a very long time.
We do.